Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a truth in taxation hearing for the Village of Bartlett is hereby called to order this 19th day of November 2013 at 7:03. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace? Here. Under Illinois law, taxing districts including home rule units of government such as the Village of Bartlett must adhere to certain public hearing requirements whenever it considers extending an aggregate property tax levy more than 5% greater than the preceding year's tax levy. An estimated levy must be established at least 20 days prior to the adoption of a final levy ordinance, which must be adopted and filed with county clerks for DuPage-Cook and Kane Counties by the last Tuesday in December. This board approved of an estimate of levy for 2013 at its regular meeting on November 5th, 2013 in the amount of $9,890,955, which actually represents a 5.06% decrease from the property taxes extended upon the aggregate levy of 2012. Thus, no truth in taxation hearing is legally required. However, this village, as it is its custom, conducts a truth in taxation public hearing in any event, and has published a legal notice of proposed property tax levy for the Village of Bartlett in the form and content as required by the Truth in Taxation Act, calling for this public hearing. At this time, I would call upon Valerie Salmons, the village administrator, to explain the proposed levy.
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is for input on the 2013 Village of Bartlett property tax levy. We have been discussing the tax levy over the last several meetings, and so I'd like to summarize that. The proposed Village of Bartlett tax levy totals $9,309,955. The general corporate and police pension levy have decreased 7.76 from the 2012 extension. The debt service levy has increased due to the principal and interest requirements of the 2009 refunding bonds. In total, the levy has decreased $500,000, or 5.06% from the 2012 extension. 2013 tax rates from Cook and DuPage County will be determined in the spring of 2014, when both counties finalize their equalized assessed values. Abatement ordinances will be presented for approval at that time, as to get a better estimate of the equalized assessed valuation, which impacts our tax rate. This levy will be presented to the village board on December 3rd, 2013, for final approval, and the levy will be filed with each county clerk no later than December 20th, 2013.
Thank you, Ms. Salmons. Are there any questions from any board members at this time? Hearing none. Are there any questions from any members of the public who are in the audience? Hearing none. Is there any member of the public who desires to offer any written or verbal testimony on this subject this evening? Therefore, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this truth in taxation hearing.
It's moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Martin. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
The truth in taxation hearing is hereby adjourned. I now call the regular meeting of the village president and the board of trustees to order. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, this isn't -- next item isn't on your agenda, but I'll ask. Have we observed a moment of silence for the residents of the Washington, Illinois, and the many other people suffering from the widespread destructive storms this past Thank you. We keep our thoughts and prayers are with these families as they rebuild and as they heal from their losses. Moving to the consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at the appropriate point on the agenda. Are there any items at this point that anyone wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask, are there any items that anyone wished to add to the consent agenda?
Can this be added?
No parking. No parking, are you?
No.
You're gonna discuss? Okay. Guess not.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Shipman. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under Treasurers' Report. Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Starting out with the sales tax report, you'll notice in your packet this evening, these two reports, we've changed just a little bit to put these two line items, really, based upon budgetary statistics, and give you a little bit of a history of how these two revenue sources affair. So I'll start out with sales tax, all the way in the far right column in our 2013-14. Our year-to-date revenue is $927,132. And if you look at that over the first five months of the fiscal year, again, we're not on a calendar year, as we previously reported in prior meetings, we are 0.20% over budget. So we're right on budget, it's targeting nicely, and I think I expect it to be a little bit over as we come into the Christmas months and into the end of the year. The motor fuel tax report, same type of format, will give you five years of history, month by month, and again, on the far right column, motor fuel tax revenue to date is $520,236. Couple other revenue items, including high growth and jobs now, which is really a capital bill that was established by the governor about three years ago to help with infrastructure-type products, so we still do receive those dollars. Year-to-date total revenue, though, is $737,710. And on a fiscal year basis, over the first five months, we are 4.11% over budget from last year.
Thank you, Jeff. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the president's report. At this time, I'd like to introduce Fred Lance from our auditing firm, Sickich LLP. Mr. Lance serves as the partner in charge for government services at Sickich. He currently serves on the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants State and Local Government Expert Panel, as well as government, finance, and management associations around the country. Mr. Lance's knowledge of complex accounting and auditing standards, which are developed by the Government Accounting Standards Board, has been valuable in our auditing process. Mr. Lance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of Sickich LLP, I'd like to thank the mayor and the members of the board of trustees for inviting me here this evening to present the information resulting from our audit of the village as of and for your fiscal year ended April 30th, 2013. As a result of our audit, you should have three documents before you for your review and approval this evening, or, I'm sorry, we issued three documents in total, two of which are before you for your review and approval this evening. The comprehensive annual financial report, which is the thicker of the documents, and that's always a very, very good sign, that that is the thickest of the documents before you. That means we can have a brief discussion with the mayor and the members of the board of trustees, as opposed to if the management letter was the thickest document, then we'd probably be having a more lengthy discussion with the mayor and the members of the board of trustees. In addition to the auditors' communication to the board of trustees and the comprehensive annual financial report, we also issued what we call a component unit report, just on the police pension fund. That was submitted to the separate police pension board for their review and approval as well. What I thought I'd do, Mr. Mayor, is briefly review the comprehensive annual financial report, and then address any questions that yourself or any members of the board of trustees have any regards to these documents. First and foremost, we do commend the village for preparing and publishing on a voluntary basis a full comprehensive annual financial report. This report is not required by generally accepted accounting principles in the state and local government industry, it's not required by Illinois compiled statutes. The village has voluntarily chosen to prepare and publish this comprehensive annual financial report in the spirit of accountability and full transparency back to the electorate.
I'm so sorry, but I'm gonna ask you, just slow down, just a little bit. You're very good. You're like that guy in the commercial.
The Federal Express commercial?
Yeah.
I can talk as fast as him is.
(laughing).
I apologize, I'm trying to cover about 230 pages of material, and I think I was told that I'd have two and a half minutes.[630.04][630.04](laughing) So that gives me two seconds per page.
Thank you.
Just kidding. So again, this goes well above and beyond the requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, as well as Illinois compiled statutes. I believe the village prepares this in the overall spirit of accountability and full transparency back to the electorate, to provide them with an accountability of all the financial position and financial transactions that the village has entered into. This is such an excellent document, it really addresses most questions that a resident, a taxpayer, a voter, or a creditor or investor, someone who buys the bonds of the village, might have in regards to the overall finances of the village, and it really attempts to address that question before the person can even ask that question. I know we do have a number of new board members on the board this year, so again, we wanted to start by congratulating on preparing the comprehensive annual financial report, and then I did want to take a moment just to walk you through the contents of this report, because it is a very, very detailed document. So if you turn with me behind the front cover of that thicker of the two documents, the first page you'll come to is the title page, we'll skip that. The next page you'll come to after that is the table of contents. So if you're with me in that thick document, and you turn to the table of contents, your comprehensive annual financial report is comprised of three primary sections. What we call your introductory section, which is the first section that you see there, has some very good information about the principal officials and organization chart, and then has a very good letter of transmittal by your chief financial officer that introduces the report to the folks that are going to be reading this. That's followed, as you can see, by the financial section. So again, that whole introductory section is a voluntary section. The next section is the financial section. We're responsible for two pages in this document, page number one and page number two, which is the independent auditor's report. Everything else is the responsibility of the village, the village management, and the members of the board of trustees, and you all do a very, very good job in preparing and publishing this report on an annual basis. After the independent auditor's report, you'll see a management discussion and analysis, again, written by your CFO, that, again, tries to communicate some items in a layperson terminology, as to what transpired from a financial standpoint in the village last year. After that, we start with the financial section. If you're looking for an overview of how the village as a whole has done, that's those first two statements that you see under that government-wide statement heading, the statement of net position, the statement of activities. This gives a reader a perspective of how's the village as a whole doing from a very, very long-term financing perspective. After that, in the fund financial statements, we start reporting by what we call major fund. Again, very, very useful information if you're looking at what transpired within the general fund, or what transpired in some of the major funds of the village. Turning our attention to the next page of the table of contents, you can see the next section is made up of what we call proprietary funds. Proprietary funds are those types of funds where you usually charge some type of fee for the services being provided by that, whether that be your water fund, your sewer fund, or perhaps your parking fund or your golf fund. Those are what we call proprietary funds, because there is a direct correlation between what someone pays and what they receive as the benefit from that transaction. So there you see the three statements for your proprietary funds. After that, we have some information on your fiduciary funds. You participate in a police pension plan. This gives good information on the statement of net position, and the current statement of changes in that position for that police pension plan. That is followed, as you can see, by about 30 pages of notes to the financial statements, very, very good reading, if you're an accountant and you really like to understand how these financial statements were put together, so. There will be a few things I'll point out in the notes to the financial statements. After that, you can see that's followed by required supplementary information, which is basically pension trend information, showing how your pension funds are doing over time. If we stopped after that page right there, that's all that generally accepted accounting principles and Illinois compiled statutes require. The village has voluntarily chosen to present another 140-some pages of financial information for everyone to see, for everyone to read, and for everyone to understand, to hopefully paint a good picture in terms of the overall finances and financial position of the village. And you can see that on the next page of the table of contents, going through the combining individual fund financial statements, if you're looking for how did the motor fuel tax fund do, how did a particular line item in the general fund do, this is where you're going to find that information, is back here in these combining individual fund financial statements. If you turn to the next page of the table of contents, towards the bottom half of that page, you'll see a heading called statistical section. It's probably one of the most useful sections of the report, especially for new board members. Your statistical section has a full 10 years of trend information that shows, I know that your director of finance just showed you about five years of information on sales tax revenues, income tax revenues, and motor fuel tax revenues. If you turn back to that statistical section, you'll find 10 years of detailed information on some of the finances of the village. Again, very, very good roadmap of where you've been, which helps people predict there where you might be going into the future. So again, we commend the village for voluntarily producing and preparing this comprehensive annual financial report. I believe you've received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for 31 years in a row now, if I'm not mistaken, which is an outstanding accomplishment for an entity your size. Believe it or not, only about 5% of the governments in the United States annually publish a comprehensive annual financial report, receive a clean, unmodified opinion from their independent auditors, and the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. It's really quite an accomplishment from the village, or by the village, it's something you've attained for the last 31 years. It speaks volumes to the policies and procedures that you all have established at the DAS, and we encourage you to continue to set those policies and procedures necessary for the village to continue to maintain a clean, unmodified opinion, and the receipt of the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. If you'll turn with me to the tab called financial section, and turn right behind that tab, you'll see a tab called independent auditor's report, and then turn behind that tab, and you'll come to the only two pages we are responsible for, the independent auditor's report. That should be on our letterhead, as opposed to the village letterhead, and it's titled independent auditor's report. So if you're all with me on regular page number one, we're very pleased to present to the mayor and the members of the board of trustees a clean, unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the village as of and for your year ended April 30th, 2013. The village expended less than $500,000 in federal financial assistance last year, so you are not required to undergo a single audit of federal expenditures. However, should you expend that $500,000 in the future, you may be required to undergo that special audit required by the federal government. Should you undergo that special audit, then in addition to being audited in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, you would also be audited in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards as well. You might note, for those of you that have been on the board for a year or two, a change in the opinion on page number one. We first go through management's responsibilities, noting that management is responsible for these financial statements, including the design of the overall internal controls over the preparation of these financial statements. With the auditor, under auditor's responsibility, then, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these financial statements, based on the field work that we've performed, and based on the audit evidence that we've obtained to support the numbers in these financial statements. If you turn to page two, that's where the real fun begins, that's where we do issue our clean, unmodified opinion, then. And for those of you that live and breathe in the accounting world, you might note that changed from last year. Last year, we used to call that an unqualified opinion, but because of the new clarity standards that were issued and implemented in the last fiscal year, we no longer refer to an unqualified opinion now, instead we refer to an unmodified opinion. So when you're out talking at the Illinois Municipal League or various other conferences, and you talk about unqualified opinions, remind your fellow mayors and trustees now it's unmodified opinions, not unqualified opinions that they should be looking for. Under the emphasis of matter paragraph on page number two, do note that the village implemented two new standards in the preparation of these financial statements. The first was implemented on time, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 63, provided new captions on the face of your financial statements, specifically what we refer to as deferred inflows and deferred outflows of resources. The village chose, then, to early implement the next pronouncement, Gatsby Statement Number 65, which said, "Well, now that you have these new classifications, here's what you should consider putting in these new classifications." It's a very, very good early implementation for the village, and we do commend you for implementing that in your current fiscal year. The rest of page number two just issues our opinions on the remainder of the information that you find in this document. So we have issued an opinion on everything that you read about in the financial section. However, standards do prohibit us from issuing an opinion on the statistical section or the introductory section, so we did not issue an opinion on those two sections. If you turn with me right behind that page, page number two, behind that tab called general purpose external financial statements, you'll come to the first page of what we refer to as the management discussion and analysis. If you share nothing else in this document with your neighbors, with your fellow taxpayers, with voters, share the management discussion and analysis with them. This is written by your CFO, it contains two years of financial information, but best of all, it contains some very, very good narratives and discussions in a layperson terminology that helps explain what caused these numbers to change between this two-year period. Why did our sales tax receipts go up? Why did our income tax receipts go up, and by how much? Why did our expenses go up this year? Oh, it's because we're in the second year of our three-year of our road program. So again, very, very good discussion and analysis. We do provide the village with an electronic PDF copy of this document. Once it's approved by the mayor and the members of the board of trustees, we encourage you to put this up on your website, again, in the spirit of full transparency. But then again, as you go out and meet with residents, meet with taxpayers, if they have any interest at all in the village's finances, direct them to the website, direct them to the comprehensive annual financial report, but most importantly, direct them to these 14 pages of management discussion and analysis. We think they'll find it to be very, very useful reading. I know there's one or two other accountants in the room, so I'm going to skip over all these pages that are paginated with the MDNA in the bottom of them, so you'll go past pages which are just paginated with, I believe, MDNA 13. If you turn past that page, you'll come to regular page number three. Regular page number three is a statement of net position for the village as a whole. This is prepared on what we call the economic resources measurement focus and the full accrual basis of accounting, so this is comparable to how a private sector company would prepare its consolidated financial statements. When you look at your total column, that is considered to be a true consolidated total column, in terms of all inter-fund transactions and inter-fund balances being eliminated to arrive at that total column. Couple of figures I think that you're interested in on that first page. First, your governmental activities, that is your general fund and your other governmental funds, the business-type activities, it's the water, sewer, golf, and parking funds. But looking about halfway down the page under total assets, you ended up the year with just shy of $215 million in total assets, the majority of those being tied up in your overall capital assets. Capital assets, remember, on the government side generally don't produce revenue for us, but instead they consume revenue for us, because we use them in the provision of services to the constituency, and then we have to maintain those, those capital assets, without having revenue generated by the majority of them. Right after total assets, you see that deferred outflow of resources. This was the implementation of Gatsby Statements 63 and Gatsby Statements 65 by the village. So you have now a new category, deferred outflows of resources, and you're reporting an unamortized loss on refunding. Now, you're probably thinking, Fred, why do we have an unamortized loss on refunding? For those of us that have been on the village board for a year or two, we were told by our CFO that this was a good refunding that saved taxpayers money in the future years. Why would it result in an accounting loss? Unfortunately, as accountants and auditors, we can only record what has transpired historically, so we're always looking backwards. We cannot record what's going to happen in the future. Your savings on that refunding bond issue are the reduced interest rates in the future, so you're paying less in the future for those interest savings. Unfortunately, we cannot go out and bring that back in your financial statements today, so we recognize generally an accounting loss on a refunding, because you have to issue a little bit more in principle to consummate that refunding. Think about refinancing your home. If you ever refinanced your mortgage, did you pay your refinancing costs out of pocket, or did you roll them into the mortgage? That's exactly what these unamortized, or this unamortized loss is, is basically those unamortized costs related to that refinancing of that bond issue. Other than that, it was a very, very good refunding for the village, it is saving taxpayers a significant amount of money in the future, based on the reduced interest rates. Again, it's just a misnomer of accounting terms that we have to recognize in accounting laws for that. As a rule of thumb, anytime you see an accounting loss on a refunding, that is generally a positive economic gain refunding, so the economics of it are positive. If you see an accounting gain on a refunding, that's generally due to a troubled restructuring of debt, where you're extending out the maturities further in the future, that's generally, even though it's an accounting gain, it's an economic loss. So again, exactly opposite of what we'd expect to see, so this is a very, very good refunding for the village. I did want to explain that, because I was worried that that is something new on the village's financial statements, and we didn't want you to have any misperception out there, or any questions from a resident or taxpayer saying, gee, what happened? Why do we have this accounting loss? So, again, very, very positive from the village's standpoint. The total liabilities, then, are about $67 million, as you see on page number three. That was a significant decline from last year. Part of that is due to the deferred inflows of resources now, that you see right after total liabilities. Again, previous standards required the village to report unavailable revenue as a liability, when really there was no liability related to it, so moving that down into this new category, I thought was very, very good for the village. Last, but certainly on page three, you see your net position at the bottom of the page. You ended up the year with about $140 million in net position. I'm sorry, yes, about $140 million in net position. Before you get excited and think you have $140 million to spend, to understand, again, the majority of that is just tied up in your overall capital asset program. If you look at the restricted amounts that you see, restricted for public safety, restricted for debt service, those are dollars that the village has set aside, but someone outside the village is telling you what you can spend that on. For example, restricted for highways and streets is your unspent motor fuel tax money that can only be used for specific purposes, for highway and street maintenance, repairs, and improvements. The key figure you'd like to look at, then, is the second line up from the bottom of page number three, that unrestricted net position. We always want to see that as a positive number. Now, you're probably looking at that and saying, well, Fred, you just said we should want a positive number there, but we see a negative number there. Why is that? That is because of how you finance your tax increment financing districts. And this is explained very, very well on page MDNA number four by your CFO. When you issue debt for a TIF district, it does not produce a capital asset that's owned by the village. Instead, it's producing assets from an economic development standpoint. The repayment of that comes from your incremental property taxes that are collected over a number of years. We can't recognize that asset from those incremental property taxes until the year they become due and payable to the village. So because of that, that TIF debt is a direct reduction of your unrestricted net position. At the end of the year, you had about $28 million of TIF bonds and TIF notes outstanding. If we isolate those from this equation, you would actually report a positive unrestricted net position in your governmental activities of about $15 million. As you collect your incremental property taxes and pay off that TIF debt, you will see this unrestricted net asset deficit continue to reverse itself and continue to become positive over time. You can see that in your statistical section right now, how that's tracking and reducing on an annual basis, as you collect those TIF taxes and repay those TIF bonds. So again, understand, that's what's causing that artificial deficit that you see on page number three. And again, your CFO has done a very, very good job of explaining the artificial nature of that in the management discussion and analysis on page number four. And I apologize, it's also due to one other issue, it's the TIF bonds, but it's also due to the general obligation bonds that you issued to help out the fire protection district in the construction of their fire station. Remember, that didn't produce a capital asset owned by the village, the fire protection district owns that capital asset. So again, we have to report this liability without an offsetting asset for it, and that's why it gets the reduction of that debt net position. Other than that, the village is in a sound financial standpoint from a long-term perspective when we isolate out that TIF debt. Tells a reader that you're doing a very, very good job from a long-term perspective. Turning our attention to pages four and five, this, again, is a cost structure for the village on a total cost basis. If anyone has asked you the burning question, what was the total cost of providing services to constituents last year? That's what you see in the very first column on page number four. This is not your operating cost, this is not your budgetary cost, but rather this is the total cost of providing services, including the long-term cost of capital, the long-term impact of pensions, the long-term impact of employee benefits, and other things that could impact the village from a financial nature. You ended up the year this year with about $46, just shy of $47 million in total expenses. That was up a bit last year on the governmental activity side, as we noted, due to the second year of your road improvement program. You spent about $4 to $5 million on that road program last year, and that's about exactly what we see your expenses go up by from the previous fiscal year. I think the key figure that you might be interested in is on page number five, the fifth line up from the bottom, that change in net position. The change in net position tells a reader, is the village economically better off or worse off as a result of the transactions that we're entered into in this last fiscal year? And you can see, you did have a decline, or a decrease, in your net position of about $5.3 million for your governmental activities. Again, we just noted that about $4 million of that was related to your road program in the current year. Another $1 to $2 million of that is related to depreciation on facilities such as the building that we're in. worse off as a result of the transactions that we're entered into in this last fiscal year? And you can see you did have a decline or a decrease in your net position of about $5.3 million for your governmental activities. Again, we just noted that about $4 million of that was related to your road program in the current year. Another $1 to $2 million of that is related to depreciation on facilities such as the building that we're in. You didn't issue debt for these, so therefore you have no revenue stream, a property tax levy or anything else coming in to pay off the debt, but yet you're bringing the depreciation expense on those facilities. So that's what you're seeing here, is the decline due to the depreciation or the use of your capital assets over time. Is it a cash flow deficit? No, that's what we call an economic deficit, due to, again, depreciating those capital assets over time. The third line up on the bottom of page five that you see, the prior period adjustment. I wanted to assure you that's not Enron or anything like that. Those due to the implementation of Gatsby Statement 65 that require the village to go back and write off previously capitalized issuance costs related to bonds. Under Gatsby Statement 65 now, we're required to treat those as period costs and to expense those in the period that the bonds are issued, and no longer capitalize them and amortize them over the life of the bond issue. From there, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn to pages number six and seven, which is the balance sheet for your governmental funds. This is more of a traditional balance sheet that reports your current flows and is really giving a reader an idea of how the village is doing on a short-term or cash flow basis versus that long-term perspective. The key figure to look at here is that very first column, your general fund column, which is where most of the general governmental activities of the village flow through. In that first column, I would look down at the bottom of page number seven to the third line up from the bottom of the page, that unassigned fund balance line. And you can see you have about $1,098,000 in that fund balance line. That equates to about 55% of your current year expenditures for your general fund. You have a fund balance target to maintain that, somewhere between 25% and 35% of your expenditures within your general fund. You're a bit above that target. So again, ended up the year from a very, very good financial standpoint in your general fund, which is very, very challenging to do in these economic times. More importantly, on page number seven, all of your governmental funds ended up the year in the black. You had no funds there, reported a fund balance deficit as of April 30th, 2013. Again, very, very significant accomplishment in these challenging economic times. If you turn to pages nine and 10, pages nine and 10 then is your current income statement for your governmental funds. And again, this gives a reader a short-term perspective of, did we bring in enough cash this year to cover the cash outflow to pay the bills this year? And if we did, how much do we have left over after the end of that? It's the best way I can describe this income statement and what we're trying to measure in this income statement. The key figure you'd like to look at here is the third line up from the bottom of page number 10, again focusing on that first column, the general fund column. And you can see that in the current year, you had a positive change in fund balance in your general fund of about $14,000. With a $20 million budget, having a $14,000 change in fund balance is what we would call a break-even standpoint from an accounting term. If you look above that line though, to the bottom of page nine, you can see you were just a little bit above the break-even standpoint in your general fund. You had a positive excess of revenues over expenditures of about $636,000. You had a transfer in then, as you see on the top of page 10, of about $323,000, but then a transfer out of $944,000. That transfer out you put over into your municipal improvements fund to further, or for future capital improvements and capital projects within the village. So again, taking some of your excess surplus from the current year and transferring it over for future capital purposes. Very, very financially frugal policies to have and to maintain, so. Very, very good policy from the village, and it shows very, very well on this particular From there, time permitting, because I think I'm over my two and a half minutes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to jump all the way to the required supplementary information on pages number 53 and 54. So if you go behind that tab that's called Required Supplementary Information. We hear a lot in the press nowadays about pension crisis that we have in the state of Illinois. Please understand that's primarily at the state level. At the local level, many local governments, including yourself, have done a good job historically funding the cost of pensions over the life of those employees. And that's what you see on pages 53 and 54, under the Schedule of Funding Progress. You're required to display six years of trend information for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund and for your Police Pension Fund to show how that's being funded over time. We always recommend that you focus on that third column on those two pages, that funded ratio column. And if everyone is doing their jobs right, we should see those funded ratios go up over time. If the markets are acting the way they should, actuaries are doing the right things and making the right predictions, people are living when they're supposed to, retiring when they're supposed to, and then permanently retiring when they're supposed to. But we all know that those things don't happen exactly as planned from an actuarial standpoint, so that's why we look at that from a trend standpoint. Looking at that third column on page 53, you ended up the year at about 75, just shy of 76% funded for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, down a little bit from the historical high of 81%, but still the highest level over the last five-year period. You're doing a very good job funding what the actuary from I M R F tells you what to fund on a monthly basis. Very well-funded pension plan. Our statewide benchmark for that is about 73% as of that same point in time, so you're about two percentage points above our statewide benchmark on that. The next page, page 54, is the same information for your Police Pension Fund, again focusing on that funded ratio column, that third column. We always want to see those going up over time, and you can see you ended up the year just shy of 85% funded for your Police Pension Plan, get about 84.73%. The benchmark in our database for that at the same timeframe is about 64% funded. You're well above the overall statewide benchmark. Again, that correlates to very, very fiscally frugal funding policies historically by the village because you do have a mature police force when you look at the demographics of your police force. Usually we only see very high-funded ratios like this in very younger demographic groups because the benefits haven't caught up yet. You, as a more mature demographic group, as I like to refer to it as, has a very, very well-funded plan. Again, it's just shy of 85%. We would encourage you to continue to fund what the actuary recommends to these plans to maintain the overall funded status of those plans and to make sure that you're doing what we call, or you're maintaining what we call intergenerational equity, which means that the current generation of taxpayers is paying for the cost of services being provided to them, and we're not pushing off those costs to future generations of taxpayers. That concludes the very brief presentation I prepared for this evening's meeting, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to address any questions that yourself or any members of the Board of Trustees might have in regards to these documents. And I hope I did slow down the presentation a little bit there.
Chief, do you have any comments about the age of your staff?
I like the board.
Does anybody have any questions?
And I don't mean to sum up everything you said, but if I'm reading you right, what you're saying is that we've got good conservative financial policies. We've had them, and we should continue to go down that road.
Historically, some of the policies and procedures that you all have set have served the village very, very well, especially your fund balance policies. And yes, we would encourage you to continue on with those. You have a double A in one rating, a very, very good bond rating for an entity with your demographics with such a small commercial base. I know you're doing a lot now to grow your commercial base from an economic standpoint, but you still are very, very heavily reliant on a residential property tax base. To have that type of bond rating with primarily a residential property tax base says you're doing a whole lot of things right, yes.
Very good.
Well, I had, I had what I think is a very important question. I can't find the budget statement.
Which budget statement can I direct you to?
The one that Valerie usually writes. The Budget Address that we get.
The Transmittal Letter?
Isn't that usually in the audit report or is that just in the budget?
There's one that's in the, yes. Page Roman number four.
Yeah. Thank you.
In terms of our recommendations for improvement, the village has done a very good job in implementing what we've recommended. Generally, auditors communicate three different types of comments, what we call a deficiency, a significant deficiency, or a material weakness. Village has no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, just one or two minor recommendations for improvement. And you'll see in that document, we've also communicated to you the status of the prior year comments and whether or not the village has implemented the prior year's rules.
Improvement, that was train tracks. It's a very fun reading.
It's a wealth of very, very good information, Mr. Mayor.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Lance? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I did have one grievance, my audit fell apart while I was reading it, so. All right. Everybody still awake? Moving on, next item on the agenda is question and answer from the board. Are there any questions from the board at this time? Hearing that, we'll move on to the town hall meeting, or town hall portion of the meeting. At this point in the meeting, we ask if anybody in the audience wishes to address the board, they step up to the podium, please state your name and your address for the record, and you have three minutes. Does anybody like to address the board at this time?
Richard Lewis, 868 Braintree Lane. Here to follow up on the cut-through traffic issue on Braintree Lane. The construction, as you know, on Stearns is now complete, and I know there was some discussion perhaps about a traffic study or some other things. There was some signs put up for local traffic only, which we certainly do appreciate. They went up in record time. They were there. Unfortunately, I don't think that we've seen a huge impact of those signs. And so we did put together as a number of neighbors kind of a list of some potential solutions, which I did email out, but I do have a hard copy here which I can share with the board. Probably our number-one solution continues to be the idea of closing Norwood Lane and returning it to a cul-de-sac, knowing that that may not get a lot of leverage or a lot of traction. There's a number of other scenarios that we've put together that we think could perhaps assist us in this area. One of those is a traffic light at Norwood and Route 59, which I know there's been some discussion about, and I know that the neighbors have been talking quite a bit about what is the mechanism that we could perhaps help support that initiative. We know it's an IDOT issue and not necessarily a village issue, so we're reaching out to you to perhaps direct us in how we can assist in getting that perhaps on IDOT's agenda. A number of other issues and ideas in terms of stop signs and different other signage. One that seems to be perhaps getting the most traction out of the residents is the idea of speed humps at this point for two reasons. One is we think that that would discourage some of the traffic that cuts through there, and for those that do continue to cut through there would certainly slow their speed down. So again, wasn't sure if this was the appropriate forum to come back with these issues, but thought we'd bring these to you and present it now, and hopefully we can discuss that further.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I think at any time that's appropriate with your issue. So thank you.
Thanks.
I want to compliment Trees-A-Russ, the people that came through like locusts and wiped out all the dead ash trees. They did a great job in my neighborhood and cleaned up afterwards, and I just want to extend a compliment to them, and maybe the village can do that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment.
Wow, thank you. We don't get compliments all that often.
That one of the vendors that we use is Trees-A-Russ, yeah?
I'd echo that sentiment because they hit my neighborhood and they, they were prompt, they cleaned up, and they didn't destroy anything in the process other than the trees.
Other than the tree.
Other than the trees. So I think it seems to be working well.
Lucky, I don't, I'm not sure where mine is on the list of destruction. Does anybody else like to address the board at this time?
Joan Plice, P L I C E, 128 South Hickory Avenue. One of the issues that we heard about over this past weekend had occurred the weekend prior to that is additional robberies in the downtown area. And this is becoming quite a concern for the residents living down there because we're hearing about it through word of mouth or the Chamber of Commerce. And we just feel that it's not only the businesses, but residents have said they've had numerous burglaries in their neighborhoods. But we don't ever hear about any of these things so that we can be prepared and be proactive to be watching out for some of this since we're not informed of it. The last one was in the newspaper was the Franco and Marvells robberies, and that one, they did know who the perpetrator was. But this is really becoming a concern for those of us living close to these businesses. And another thing is, I think after a certain point, the businesses will just get fed up when you've been robbed five or six times, and they'll just leave. And there will be, again, no businesses. So that's what the Economic Development Commission is trying to do, is get business, but when you have this happening to them, how can they stay? So.
Chief, is there any comments you'd like to make on that as far as what we're doing and how it's announced to the public or?
Well, I think we're mixed. First, we got to be clear in terminologies. A robbery is a crime of violence, person to person. It usually involves a gun or a knife or a strong-arm beating of some type. Those are still very rare. Burglaries, on the other hand, we've had commercial burglaries. There hasn't, if you look at long-term, we had a spike recently. We had one gentleman come into town and commit two downtown commercial burglaries. Put a lot of resources on that, we brought him to justice. And then just recently, right across the street, there was another commercial burglary, which is a breaking and entering after businesses are closed. That's the primary difference. One's a crime against property. A robbery is a crime against a person, it's a very violent act. A burglary is still just as intrusive and just as alarming, but it's not, it's usually somebody throwing a rock through a window and making a dash towards the cash register after hours. That's what we, we just had that occur across the street. We do have a suspect, we're working on the leads and following up on that as well. We are working with the business community. We do publicize those. There's a daily bulletin that goes out to the press as far as putting it on the webpage. I can tell you crime prevention works with individual areas and communities. So I could address her individual concerns.
Yeah.
With her individual.
Yeah, well, I think that's probably good information, yeah. You know, maybe visiting with the businesses down along the area that's been affected, maybe helping them understand what they can do to try to thwart, thwart the information.
Quite frankly, that's in progress, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's good.
It's been in progress and it continues, yeah.
Is there a neighborhood watch in your area, Joan?
Is there a neighborhood watch?
No, we don't have a neighborhood watch. Most of our, my neighbors don't even live in homes.
One of the comments I might ask Valerie would be, you know, when we started talking about communicating with the public when we first brought this up was doing more with the emails and stuff. Do we communicate things like this to people in the community through emails and here again repetitively saying what's going on? Have we done that? Are we thinking about that?
I think we are thinking about it. As you've seen from some of our reports, we're doing, we're doing an email blast sometimes daily now. We're really getting them out there. And we haven't expanded to crime and things going on, but certainly as a community ride basis, that ought to be something that we're considering, trustee Cameron.
Sure. And do we have an approximation of how many people we've got on our email list? I was thinking about this the other day. I thought, well, it's one thing to wait for people to put their email in front of us, but I'm sure like, like I get on a repetitive basis, I get emails sent to me that say, if you don't want this email, please unsubscribe. Would it be, would that be a possibility that we could look into as far as, and I don't know, maybe there's legal ramifications here either, that we simply would get a list of emails of the residents and we would, without their solicitation, simply send it to them with that disclaimer at the end? If they don't want it, don't, you know, unsubscribe to it. I just think we see, we'd seem to cover more ground by actually sending things to people unsolicited than we would if they, waiting for them to ask for it.
Let me look and see if that's a potential.
Okay, good. Yes, ma'am.
The problem we have with some of our residents, like my neighbor, she's 91, she does not recognize her.
Right. I don't want to get too far off on an email discussion here. That might be a good topic for a different agenda item. Chief, if I can just ask a couple of quick questions. If I understand you correctly, what you've told me now is that at least in recent history, we've had essentially no robberies. We've had three burglaries, two committed by the same offender who's been caught, and a third burglary that you're working on. You kind of have an idea who our bad guy is. Is that a fair summation?
If we're talking about this demographic area, right?
Yeah. I think that if I'm understanding Joanne right, we're talking about kind of the downtown.
That would be an accurate assessment.
That's the area of what we're, we're talking about in this instant.
Yeah, and I can tell you this recent, there was an individual, we believe it's the same individual, that hit another hair salon and a restaurant across the street, and then traveled into a local, a neighboring town.
I guess what I'm trying to do too is kind of get a handle on this because I think we all know how sometimes one person hears something and they can, they can tend to mushroom a little bit. I want to make sure that that's not.
Well, yeah, there was a hair salon that hit that person. We did a lot of, a lot of extensive research on that. We brought, we arrested that person and brought all charges against him. He's presently in custody. The second time it occurred, we've been on it nonstop, and we've developed leads that we're very confident will eventually bring that person to justice as well.
And I guess the second part of my comments or questions would be, so based on, we do criminal statistical type analysis, formal or otherwise clearly, and based on those things, when there's a need for some type of a community alert, we have some methods to communicate that. I'm curious what that is and where you would recommend residents such as Joanne or other people, if they're curious about information, what's the best way to get that?
That's a, that's a great question. It's multifaceted. I can tell you, my staff has been across the street and through the business community, both educating them on what they can do through SEPTED and crime prevention methods and asking for support. and asking for support from them to beef up their own security as well. We put our own staff downtown to address the issue, and additionally, the investigations is ongoing. So, it's multifaceted. We make everything available on a daily basis to the local paper. But when we have a targeted area that we think is a concern, we go to that neighborhood or we go to that business community. We literally went door to door on this one.
Very good.
Chief, I also believe that if you have a neighborhood watch program, don't you, like Joan would get her neighbors, and you would come out and speak to them and tell them what they could do to help them fill...
We are always organizing those. We're always open to starting new ones. We have some that have been in place for years. We have others that have been, they're all in different ages of maturity. But, yeah, we're always willing to start another one.
Always good for...
All it takes is a spokesperson for a neighborhood, and we send resources out there and start helping them galvanize and organize those resources.
So, I mean, it's good information about what they are doing, but we'll certainly entertain any suggestions you might have as well, Joan. So, thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else like to address the board this time?
Hello, my name is Dominic. I live on 311 West North Avenue. November, give me one second, November 7th, at 5:30, there was a parked car. My across-the-street neighbor, and it was a parked car, again with this traffic that's going through North Avenue, smashed parked car. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. I mean, obviously, you guys did something for Braintree. What about us? We're taxpayers, too. I mean, this is ridiculous. I mean, granted, there's squad cars at the stop sign. All I'm asking is for a $25 sign where it says "No Left Turn" from certain times from certain times. They'll fix this problem, most of the problem. That's all I'm asking.
Dominic, what's your last name, sir?
Belkouzi.
Would staff like to address it? I know I've got some information that you shared with us.
Yeah, one of the things that we're doing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did look at what you were asking for before.
Mm-hmm.
We did, and as you know, we're doing some traffic studies. We went out there. There was a concern about rolling stop signs, and certainly, it's been very productive in terms of ticketing.
Oh, yeah, I know, and I've been waking up in the middle of the night because of the squad cars with the lights and stuff. I mean, I don't appreciate that. I hope you don't appreciate that with all the squad cars in front of your house and stuff. I don't appreciate that.
But what we are looking at was your suggestion about having no left turn signs at different areas at different times of day, and there's always unintended consequences. And so, what we've been looking at is if we put it a certain street, does it just move it to another neighborhood street? And so, we're looking at some of those recommendations that you raised before, but I don't know that we've concluded or finished our review enough to be able to say, "That's a good idea. That solves the problem," as opposed to just moving the problem.
I mean, and then also, the 35 going into a school zone on North Avenue, that should be a 25, not 35. Again, I readjusted this problem last time. There are children there. Now, think about that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And just so you know, Dominic, we did bring it up. You just can't change these things overnight. You can't just throw a sign up and assume that the traffic patterns will all be okay. It takes some time.
I know it takes time.
So, we are addressing it, and it doesn't, it doesn't...
I mean, but there's still semi-trucks going through our neighborhood. I mean, a parked car getting smashed? Come on. This is ridiculous. I can't even park my own car in front of them.
Have there been a lot of cars smashed in your neighborhood?
Yes. There's, my neighbor Diane was smashed. I had a mirror taken off of my car. For what? This is ridiculous.
That's three?
That's three.
Okay. And in what period of time?
Okay, well, it's usually in the afternoon, but also in the morning, too. I mean, you hear boom boxes and, you know, people racing down our street. I mean, I have a little one at home. This is ridiculous. I mean, I'm almost, I'm almost close to selling my house. I don't want to live there no more because of that fact.
I'm just, I'm just asking because I wanted to get a better feel for exactly what's going on, and maybe it behooves some of us to go and just sit there.
Exactly. If you guys want to come, come here at 4:30 in the afternoon, and you'll see, people just blow through our stop signs. I mean, you can ask the sergeant, and he'll look at all the tickets they give out there. I mean, I know it's a good revenue for you guys, but...
Oh, please, don't, don't go too far. Don't you go too far. That's not, that is not the purpose of the...
I'm sorry. I'm just mad. I'm just a little upset. That's it, so...
We understand.
You understand when you complain that the police cars are there, well, they're trying to stop exactly what you're complaining about. And over time, they're going to say, "Hey, I can't speed on this. I've got two tickets." So, I mean, we, and we're still working with Braintree. That problem is not solved yet.
Yeah. I mean, but he's saying, oh, there was a sign right away? I mean, we...
Well, yeah, but we can't put a "no through" traffic on your road. It just won't work.
I'm not saying no traffic, but certain times.
That's the sign we put on his streets, sir. Yours is more of a thoroughway. It actually, from point A to point B.
We do appreciate your concern, and...
And then, you know, also with, like, the signs on the floor, you know, like on the, their school zone, I mean, that's also, you know, that's another subject, but, you know, I just want to resolve, let's get one subject at a time.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board at this time?
Are there no school signs in that area?
Not on the street, I don't think.
There's a school, school zones are 400 feet, 200 to 400 feet prior to school and after school. That is out of the area of school zone.
And, sir, sir, we're going to bring this up later.
Yeah.
And I understand that you're duly noted that you're really aggravated with this, and we don't, we don't take this lightly, so, but we do get it. We get it. We understand, you're understanding. As an on, I know, I know. As an ongoing conversation, you can bring it up with any of us individually or whatever.
Because we're already busy, so it's kind of hard to add it, yes.
We all have full-time jobs.
Yeah.
I know, but thank you.
Chief, did we actually complete this traffic study?
It's still ongoing, I think.
It's still ongoing.
Study's ongoing.
Yeah.
We just discussed this at last meeting. It's only been two weeks.
I'm sorry?
We discussed this at the last meeting. It's only been two weeks, so you haven't finished your study yet.
Well, it's multifaceted, yes. It'll take a while.
So, we are working on it.
We're enforcing as well.
So, in terms of timing, then, do you think that your study will be done two weeks, four weeks, six weeks? Any kind of a broad frame?
From the police side of the thing, it'll probably be about another two weeks.
Okay.
Approximately.
But, you know, importantly, I don't want to promise something we can't deliver in two weeks. The speed study is just, as the chief points out, it's a multifaceted issue. It's much more complex than just a car.
The point that I was trying to make is, we just discussed this two weeks ago, so we're getting into it. We just started. We're working towards it, correct?
Enforcement is ongoing. The speed study's being conducted, but there's going to be more, it's going to be beyond just simply a police issue as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Dominic.
Thank you.
Moving along, unless there's anyone else like to address the board at this time. Next item on the agenda are standing committee reports. First standing committee is Planning and Zoning Committee chaired by Trustee Cameron.
Thank you, President Wallace. There's one item on the Planning and Zoning Committee this evening, and that is the petition for special use permit to serve beer and wine for a proposed video gaming establishment that will also provide dining and serve refreshments at 22, 22, 225 South Main Street in Bartlett Town Center. The petitioner is also proposing to sell cigarettes and to not allow patrons under 21 in the premises. The proposed establishment would include a dining area with 11 seats, as well as an entertainment area with five gaming stations. The proposed hours of operation match the maximum hours allowed for a Class V liquor license, Sundays through Thursdays, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Fridays and Saturdays, 8:00 a.m. through 2:00 a.m. The petition for special use permit to serve beer and wine on premises was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Committee on, at the September 3, 2013 Committee of the Whole Meeting. On October 3, 2013, the Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on the petitioner's request for a special use permit for the sale of beer and wine, and did not recommend approval. The motion to approve the petitioner's request having failed by a vote of 0 to 7. The Committee of the Whole again reviewed the matter at a November 5, 2013 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and sent it on to the board for final vote. With that, I move to pass ordinance 2013-82, an ordinance granting a special use permit to allow the serving of beer and wine at Elsie's Place Video Gaming Establishment as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Aaron's. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I'll go first.
Go right ahead.
I wanted to state unequivocally that I will be voting no. In the, in all the years that I've been on this board, I have never seen a proposal or a petitioner whose proposal fail unanimously. I respect the work that the Plan Commission does. They hold a public hearing, and they feed the information to us, and out of respect for their decision, and also because I do agree with them that it does not promote general welfare, and that it does not promote morals or the general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity. And for those reasons, I will be voting no.
I, too, believe that the Plan Commission did their due diligence. They listen to the public, and they have the ear of the public, and I think that we have to listen to the Plan Commission because they are the voice of the public, relaying that information to us. Louder. So, I, too, will be planning on voting no.
I also believe we need to still carry this further, and we had talked about once attaching a square footage for per gambling machine. We need, we need to get on the ball because it's just going to help us make these decisions later. I don't think this is the right place for, I don't think the location's the right place for this.
Yeah, I'm all for supporting businesses, bringing businesses into town, but I just don't think that this is the right location for that use.
And I also firmly believe there has to be, I'm not saying a limit, but I, Bartlett is not going to be a little Las Vegas as long as I'm here.
And we need to get a handle on the video gaming. I mean, there has to be, you know, we can handle it from the liquor license perspective and the zoning perspective, and we've had that conversation, so I won't retread that, but we have to do something. And it's getting around that we're still grappling with this issue. When I was at the IML conference, people from other communities, even downstate, asked me questions, you know, made the statements to me, "Aren't you having a problem with video gambling?" So, we really need to get a hold of this.
Any other comments from any other board members? Thank you. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's? No. Cameron?
No.
Carbonaro?
No.
Martin?
No.
Ranky?
No.
Shipman?
No.
That motion fails.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee. Chairman Cameron, next item on the agenda is under Building Committee, Chairman Martin.
I have nothing on this date. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Under item C on the agenda, Finance Golf Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item on the agenda is under License and Ordinance Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing further to add.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next item on the agenda is Police and Health Committee, Chairman Shipman.
Nothing to report tonight, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman Shipman. Next item on the agenda is 11F Public Works Committee, Chairman Aaron's.
I have so many items tonight. I hope you're all prepared. Okay, our first item, the Rhonadoc Public Improvements Acceptance Ordinance was passed under the consent agenda. Our second item is the Brewster Creek Business Park No Parking Ordinance, and it has come to our attention via Mr. Kester from Public Works that there's a lot of parking going on, on the streets in Brewster Creek, and it is impeding the emergency vehicles and other traffic movements. So, at this time, I would move to approve ordinance 2013-... 83? 83. An ordinance accepting the public improvements for Brewster Creek Business Park. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading Rhonadoc's. Never mind. I move the Village Board of Dought Ordinance 2013-83, an ordinance enbending Title VI, Chapter 11, 1300, Section 6-11-1303.1, Schedule 5, No Parking Zones A, to add no parking zones on certain streets in the Brewster Creek Business Park. That was the motion. Say second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Aaron, seconded by Trustee Ranky. Is there any discussion?
Well, yes. I have a question I'd like to address, I guess, to our administrator. Within the industrial area, there's obviously a growth, and so, I'm concerned about putting burdens on the people that are there. Do we have a parking issue there already? I mean, do we not account for the growth and the parking spaces so that the people that are coming in now don't have the actual parking facilities to actually be able to go to their places of employment? And that being the case, if that's an issue, then I think it becomes an undue burden to put an ordinance on this area that would potentially give fines and fees to people parking on the streets if there's no other place for them to park.
Actually, when a building comes in, we do have an ordinance that indicates how much parking is required based on whether it's square footage or the type of business, and up front, they always provide the parking that is required. That's not a problem. What happens is sometimes they will begin to expand, begin to have more business, and really kind of outgrow the parking, and are looking to expand their business, and we want them to expand in Brewster Creek. And so, we try to work with them. That's why we're bringing it to you now, because we worked with the two businesses that had the problem, and they were able to locate some temporary parking so that they could not only get the cars off the streets, but they had big delivery trucks and vans and semis that were actually blocking some traffic. It was an issue of public emergency vehicles getting through, but it isn't that they don't provide enough parking up front. It is that sometimes their needs change, and their parking gets ahead of their expansion plans, and we try to work with that.
Is it in between shifts? Because I've been over there at Brewster Creek where there have been cars on both sides, and I was wondering the same thing.
I can't answer that.
Every shift. In the one, in the one business, it's every shift because they expanded exponentially. They initially came to us, and they had a two-unit building. They thought they'd never exceed the one unit. They not only exceeded the one unit, they went into the second unit, and they've just recently, as Valerie said, we've been working with them, they've just recently taken a space in another building. They've moved the cars over there, and now they're preparing parking for trucks on that site, but they're not there yet. They have to do a parking lot for the trucks, which is on another site, and they just expanded exponentially.
It would just seem to me that maybe we would want to do more to help resolve the solution as opposed to penalizing their employees and potentially causing...
We helped them locate into the other space. They looked at three or four different, you know, possible spaces to expand into. I don't... I don't think that if you talk to them, the President of the company, he didn't imagine that they would grow as quickly as they have, and they never planned on growing this big.
Which is a great thing. That's what I'm saying. I'm really happy that that's happening, but I can't see the point of penalizing their employees for parking on the street because they've grown, they don't have the parking spaces right now to be able to park, so they have to park on the street to be able to have a place to go in to go into work.
Actually, we're not.
If we're worried about emergency vehicles not being wide enough, then maybe we limit one side of the street parking.
Can we get an answer to both, one question at a time?
We did work with them to limit it to one side of the street, and we were actually getting complaints from other businesses about them parking on both sides, so we told them move to one side. We worked with them and worked in conjunction with them to try to locate in a couple of other spaces that weren't completely built out. They just found a space to move into, and they moved all their cars off the street into that other parking lot.
I think we understand that part, Jim. Have we tried to figure out if we can have parking this side only or anything is what we're trying to get at here? Do we have to go completely to no parking on any streets? That seems a little severe. If one of these businesses expand and they start ticketing people for parking on the street, that's going to be real problematic. So have we looked at no parking this side? I'm sorry, Paul.
Right now, you do -- right now, you could accommodate parking on one side of the street with all the vacant property that you have out there. But what's happening right now is they're parking on the side of the street where there are no other businesses. So there's vacant property at that point. But then how do you determine what side, once that gets built up, and we want to encourage more additional growth out there, where do you put the parking on there? With our parking restrictions that we have throughout that whole entire park for our parking requirements as our buildings are being built, there is adequate off-street parking. This company grew very, very quick. We started working on this almost a year ago, last year with this company. We talked to this company, had the company in there many of times, saying that he was looking for other expansion, other ways to do that. We did not bring this before you until this company had another option to do that. We have no intention of discouraging people from any businesses or growth out there, but we're hearing it from other businesses that they don't like that. Why did I have to build all this off-street parking? But they're okay, you're allowing them to turn around and park. It gets to be a parking lot out there. At night, we have the overnight parking that we can deal with on that. But we're finding out that the street is becoming a staging parking lot for the trucks instead of going out and unloading, loading on their site. They're unloading or loading, pulling out, they're on to the streets, and they're stopping there. The trucks are stopping on the streets, using that as their rest period, even if it's during the day or the night, encompassing a concern with all the other businesses.
Well, I thought you had said that you spoke with certain businesses and had been trying to resolve this thing. Well, then obviously, we need to sit down and have a conversation with these businesses who are infringing upon this growth that they're having and say, you know, "We've got to make this work," which I think would make better sense to go to the businesses that are growing and say, "How can we make this work?" as opposed to just putting an ordinance out and penalizing.
Trustee Cammer, that's what we did. We have worked with those businesses for one solid year. One solid year. We've worked with them, we helped them identify places to park, we approved temporary parking without paving it, just graveling it, so they were able to do that. We didn't bring this to you for a whole year, and we didn't bring it to you until all the issues were resolved.
So the last couple of weeks, no one's parked in the street, then?
Not the cars. The trucks are still there. He's in the process of getting a permit to build the truck parking on the same other site. He hasn't been able to move the trucks there yet until the parking lot's done.
And when will that be?
Well, about a month.
When?
About a month.
Month? Well, I mean, if we've got the parking situation done and it's the unloading, why don't we just put no unloading? And then everyone should be happy. And worst case, if there is an overflow from another businesses expanding, they don't get ticketed later on.
I think we're just looking for discussion at this point, not quite suggestions. Did you have something, Trustee Shipman?
Not on the board, no.
Any other questions? I know this is a little severe, I guess. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
No.
Carbonaro?
No.
Martin?
No.
Ranky?
No.
Shipman?
No.
Motion fails.
Our next agenda item is the Downtown Traffic Study Professional Services Agreement, and staff has contacted Burke Engineering about doing a traffic count, traffic movements at peak hours, turning movement counts, traffic signals with railroad crossing gates, and a review of the accident crash history. This study would cost $25,000 and would take approximately 60 to 90 days. So at this time, I move to approve the Professional Services Agreement for the Downtown Traffic Assessment from Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
It has been moved by Trustee Aaronz, seconded by Trustee Cammer, to approve the Professional Services Agreement for the Downtown Traffic Assessment from Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited in the amount of $25,000. Is there any discussion?
Is that the going rate? It's a lot of money.
It is. It's a lot of money.
Have we done a traffic study, this exact one, in the past for this area?
In the downtown?
Yeah.
We haven't had an overall traffic study downtown, and I can't remember when we did.
I have a question. Is this something we can't do in-house?
No, we have no ability to do this big. This is an overall, what the request was for, an overall review of traffic, where roads go, one-way. They wanted to have an overall comprehensive analysis, and we don't have the in-house ability to do that.
Okay.
Chair, are there someone for half that?
If you would like not to use this company who we use, we could go find another company and try to get it less expensive.
I wouldn't mind seeing a traffic study done, but at this time, I'd like to say that spending $25,000 on a problem that doesn't seem to be critical at this time, I'm not sure that that's money well spent. So I would be voting no.
Let me ask you a question. There's been several things that have been brought up, not only at Town Hall meetings and other times, and it seems that this is -- would this study help us to understand any possible solutions to the railroad crossings and to the Western Avenue-North Avenue situation and any of these other things that are complicated over time?
That are tangential to the downtown? It may. That's a good point, Mayor. It certainly may.
Well, if that's the case, then it makes it, it does make a difference. If this is instrumental in answering some of these questions from people, then I think that that's very prevalent. That's pretty important.
Well, mainly what we have heard from the EDC and some trustees is that it's a huge problem and that we need to focus on the traffic problem that we have in downtown Bartlett. That's why we brought this forward.
But didn't we already do that study? I mean, am I wrong in saying that we spent an awful lot of money five, six years ago doing the same thing?
No. What we did when the station went in is we did an analysis to know where to put the lights and how to time the lights. The Board questioned the timing of lights, and we went back and did a study and were able to change the timing of lights. But it wasn't an overall traffic study that would say, "Hey, maybe we need a one-way going this way. Maybe we need to, at certain times of day, change things to this way." We have not done that. We have done studies relative to the new train station and the timing of the lights. I mean, if we had it, we would pull it out and talk about it, but we've had requests, and so we brought it up to you.
Would this be instrumental in potentially recruiting businesses for this area if we have good information to give them saying this is how much traffic is downtown?
Well, I think so, and based on the perception that I've heard from the Board and certainly the EDC, the ability to make some changes in our downtown traffic flow is critical. And they asked that we get a study together and have you people look at it and get going with it.
So we didn't get any other bids or anything on this, or did we?
We did not. This is our traffic engineer, our consulting traffic engineer who we use on most of these projects.
And is there a likelihood that there would be other companies that would be considerably cheaper?
You could always find another company to be considerably cheaper.
I guess I'm not so concerned about that part because it's going to be expensive doing this kind of stuff. What I am concerned about is can we actually go to them and say, "Okay, if we're going to spend this kind of money, and you might need to sharpen your pencil a little bit, these are these other surrounding areas and issues that we have, and we really need some work done at these issues."
We would like it thrown in.
We want all of this done at one time.
I think that's a reasonable --
And we can answer a lot of these questions about the railroad crossings. We can answer the questions about Western and North Avenue. We can answer some questions about solutions.
I think we certainly could increase the scope of work.
Not just counting cars, we want solutions, yeah. That would be my suggestion.
Tying into both, yes.
Well, at this time, do you want the motion withdrawn because this is not included in the current contract? That's a forbid.
Just vote on this to expand the scope in the latter, so we should table it.
So we'll bring it back to another Board meeting.
I move to table this, Matt, to a future Village Board date so that we can take a look at increasing the scope and possibly changing the cost of the study.
Moved by Trustee Ranky and seconded by Trustee Martin. I do have one piece of discussion on that. I would suggest that we don't spend a whole lot of time on this, let's get it done the next two-week meeting because this is important information. So it should be on our agenda in two weeks to vote on it and get it done. There's no other discussion, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz? Are we voting on tabling?
Remember, tabling the next meeting.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
I'll read the whole thing. Professional Services Agreement for the Downtown Traffic Assessment from Christopher B. Burke Engineering in the amount of $25,000 is tabled to the next meeting. Is that proper?
Okay. Did you want to tell yourself anything else? Okay, our last agenda item is the DuPage County Parcel Transfer. We received a request from DuPage County to transfer property on Coral Avenue, east of Voyager Drive. The parcel number is 0102206088. This was acquired by the county via tax sale, and we do presently own and maintain other lots in this area. So at this time, I move the Village Board to approve Ordinance Number 2013-86. Four.
Eighty-four.
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 Eighty-four? Thank you.
Second.
An ordinance requesting the transfer of property from the county of DuPage.
Second. Been moved by Trustee Aaronz, seconded by Trustee Cammer. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
About the --
Why do we own these parcels? Why don't we auction them off?
If you'll recall, I don't recall, but back in the '70s when there were a lot of subdivisions built in Bartlett, the developers left green strips through the backyards. And we took, I don't know, probably 20 years ago, and had an overall project to split it down the middle and deed it off to the property owners on each side. Now, they had to agree to that. It expanded their backyards, but they also had to pay taxes on it. And this was a little piece at the end that nobody wants. It never got deeded off. We have access to it because it's not in the middle of a bunch of lots. Nobody wants it, and we have to take it.
So we've actually offered it to the adjacent property owners, and they're not interested?
Absolutely. It's just at the end of a lot. Okay, Paul?
Yeah, most of them did go to the residents. This one was actually on a tax sale, and it was turned over to the county. County doesn't own land in the municipality. That's why they came back to this. This got caught up, I think, probably the property owner that had the land ended up selling the house, didn't sell this part with it, so then it was on tax sale. It's a strip of land. We do have other ones in the area of that nature that we do maintain.
Would it be something the Park District would want?
It's not large enough for them to do anything with, and it's only between two homes. It runs the length of a property.
The other two that are north, are those ours too, or are those the homeowner's lot? That same narrow strip that carries on?
Two of the north are ours.
Okay. Well, it can make it the smallest park in Bartlett. Real long bowling alley.
Bachi, are we responsible?
It's got the dimensions.
Are we responsible for the maintenance on these?
We do maintain them if the property owners adjacent don't pick it up. Yes.
Are we able to, down the road, actually request if a new property owner comes in, if they want it, they can deed it?
That'll be counsel -- Brian Maraz could answer that one.
Or we could give it to the Park District?
Yeah, we'll be back. Temporary ownership.
My question is, what's the end game?
Temporary ownership.
Or would it be an area that we could use or offer to the public for like a public gardening area or something of that nature?
I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate it.
They'd probably love it.
Yeah.
Give it to Park District.
I didn't see on here, we're not paying for this, we're just inheriting it. Is that correct?
We're just inheriting it. I think it's about a 20-foot strip through there.
20-foot?
Yeah, I think that area is like a 20-foot area.
Bachi.
Is there no other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve the ordinance Number 2013-84, an ordinance requesting transfer of property from the county of DuPage.
Thank you. That will conclude the Public Works Committee for this evening, and we can only look forward to just as many agenda items at the next Board meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Aaronz. Next item on the agenda is under New Business. Does anybody have any new business in the goodie order?
I was wondering, once again, if we can put on our website how people can protect themselves during the shopping season, Chief? You know, the credit cards and stuff. I know that a few years back, I had asked that, and we did something in the mailer. Can we put something out again, just, you know, be wary if you're buying stuff online?
We'd be happy.
Yeah, that'll be forthcoming. Appreciate it.
Also, on the website, I wish we would do something in cooperation with the Chamber about small shopping. And that means shopping in the small stores that are in Bartlett. And there's a 50-50-50 program where if you spend, I mean, think about it, if you go to, let me think of a store, Candy, 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 and spend 50 bucks there, and you go to Bartlet Coin, and you spend 50 bucks there, and then you go down to one of the spas and spend 50 bucks there, you've increased the village's sales tax dollar by $3. Well, it doesn't sound like much, but if everybody did that, if you shop locally and shop small, it would do a lot for the village, and it would, I think it would make everybody feel good to know that they can shop in our village. You don't have to go to the huge malls. You don't have to buy everything online. You can shop right here in town and get a plethora of gift items that you want for Christmas. It just takes a little effort on all our parks to shop in Bartlett. Keep that money in Bartlett. Thank you. That's it.
I just want to tell you that there's an article in Bartlett that comes out next week that has a shopping local article that talks about that very thing.
Good.
I think it's an AMX thing, Shop Locally. It's a certain day coming up. Yeah.
Great.
I think it's a great idea, and most of the shops and stuff around here will give some type of a gift card or a gift certificate you can purchase for people, and I do that very frequently for my own wife. Other new business, I wouldn't mind, in many of my meetings with some other mayors, and I know it's been a concern of this Board as to how to temper this video gaming, this is nothing, we're changing subject here, many of the meetings that I have suggest that a lot of the villages around the area -- that a lot of the villages around the area have a much larger fee per, what are they called, machine than we do. So I would entertain an idea for the village to look into the locality of charging. I know the villages around us are 500 a machine, $1,000 a machine. It could potentially be a way to sway some of the smaller square-footage places from popping up. So if none of these against that, I would love for the village to do a little research on...I know from...I went back and read minutes from when people were discussing this, and it seemed at that point it had to be tied to the amount of work we do, and I found from other mayors, that's not the case.
That's right.
So I think what we need to entertain here is finding out the facts first and then looking into how we can incrementally increase those charges.
We'd be happy to do that.
All right.
I think we have to temper that, though, with the idea that we don't want to penalize our current businesses who already have the machines going. And that's the reason that last summer, we decided to okay the video gaming. That was done as a...in support of the local businesses that wanted it. But I would hate to, you know, in line with that, I would hate to penalize them any more than is necessary.
I agree. We're just trying to find out the facts, so...
With the fee. So, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Is there any other new business? Hearing none. Are there any questions or comments from the trustees of the board? Hearing none, I want to alert the public that we will be adjourning the board meeting and move directly into the community of a whole meeting immediately following the community of a whole meeting. We will be adjourning to executive session to discuss collective bargaining pursuant to Section 2C, two of the Open Meetings Act. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?